Let's call to order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Papa Bluff, Missouri to be held on Monday, October 16th, 2023, in the City Council chambers. Our invocation tonight will be by Mr. Danny Mineheart from the Little Brown Church. Please stand for the invocation or remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pray first.
Pray first.
Heavenly Father, Lord, we come today in this place, Lord, for one reason, one purpose, Lord, is to direct the business of the city. We ask God that your hand be upon each and every member of this council. Father God, we pray dear God that we have the mind of Christ. Lord, that we have the mind of what you would have us to do, what you'd have us to say. Now, God, we just ask that your blessing be upon all of us here. Lord, let us all to have a clear mind, a clear heart, and, Lord, let us to do what you called us to do according to your purpose and your will. Now, Father, we ask that you bless every member of this council, everyone that's come here tonight, Lord. Let them to realize that, Lord, things that we do, Lord, are important, and, Lord, we need to do and make the right decisions. Now, God, we just ask you have your way in all of our business tonight. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mineheart. Roll call, Court Phelps.
Councilwoman Parson?
Here.
Councilwoman Horton?
Here.
Councilman Smith?
Here.
Councilman Massingham?
Here.
Councilman Depew?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Fox?
Here.
Mayor Cornman?
Here.
We have seven present.
Item five, disclosure of interest. Any member of the City Council may disclose any possible conflict of interest dealing with any, either item on the printed agenda or any matter discussed at a previous meeting. Seeing none. Item six, citizen's input. Each person in the audience may take this opportunity to address the City Council on any matter which is not on the printed agenda. Seeing none. Item seven, consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda are approved by a single action of the City Council. If any council member would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda and considered separately, he or she may request to do so.
Mr. Mayor, I do believe that we received in our packet all of the items listed below, and with that being said, I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item eight, workshop items for discussion. Item A, the City Council will consider authorizing the mayor to enter into a memorandum of understanding with Bird Rides, Inc. Mr. Sisk.
I believe you were provided with the MOU on this. It's the exact copy of last year. We are a bit late renewing this. There's been some communication issues with Bird. Apparently, they've had some management changes. We are only asking to extend this through June 30th, as this year's would have expired. We would like for them to still be in place when the eclipse, when all those festivities happen, so we are asking you to renew it at this time, so.
Okay, well, the church is the same.
Everything is staying the same, yes.
Thank you, Mr. President of voting session, number six.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, James. Item B, the City Council will consider a request to allow UTVs, the utility transportation vehicle, usage on the streets and highways inside the city limits of Papa Bluff, Missouri. Manager Winters.
This item has been brought before you a couple of times in the past. We've had some council members request that it be brought back up for consideration. I did send you out a copy of, well, it was presented to you the last time it came up, and really that ordinance is pretty identical to just about every other ordinance in cities across the state that allow UTVs. You know, I have had conversations with the city manager in Sykesville. They've had this in place for a couple of years now and haven't really had any issues. I really don't have a whole lot to add. I think, you know, I think there are some people here in the audience that might want to speak. I don't know if you have questions of me based on what I had sent out, so I...
Now, is this just for UTVs, not ATV?
That is correct.
Not four-wheelers and...
Not four-wheelers, just the UTVs, side-by-sides, yes. Not, not like you're just, not like a motorcycle with four wheels, not the, not the four-wheelers, no.
Okay, now, will that include the little mule-type deals? Is that considered a UTV as well, do you think?
I think so.
I think so, yeah, based on the definition and descriptions that are in the, in the ordinance.
Okay.
I do think if y'all would allow this, some of, I think there's a couple of folks here in the audience, one or two that want to speak.
Yeah, you guys can come on up if you'd like to speak on this.
Well, we got, I don't know how many is here before, just pull aside back here.
All right, well...
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for listening to this. I'm Dan St. Lawrence. I know most of you.
Yeah, state your name and your address for the record, please.
Dan St. Lawrence, 288 Richland Lane, Papa Bluff, Missouri. I'd be happy to answer any questions. I heavily researched this ordinance myself. I studied Luxus Lation when I was with Animal Control, so I went over everything. A lot of the benefits that it has, that minimum age is 21 years of age, which is really good to have in there. Like Matt, I called Sykesville last year on this and spoke to their chief. I spoke to their other individuals in the city regarding it. They had no issues. They did open it up for county residents, which helped benefit them financially because they sold over 200 permits last year. We do have support from the chief of police. He's for it, as many of you may know. The benefits of it, as we were talking, is, you know, I go on a lot of side-by-side poker runs and rides throughout different communities across the state. And here, there's a very big following of people with side-by-sides. Now, these rides are not your $5,000 machine. These newer ones are up to $55,000, you know, heat and air, power windows. They're nicer than a lot of cars of what people are driving on the streets, and the safety features that are built into them are very strong. You know, they are designed to be off-road, but they put all these creature comforts into them, you know, to where responsible people ain't going to get out there and want to tear them up, you know. We were talking about having a group of, like, on a Friday night, we want to go for a ride, say we come into town and go to a local restaurant, you know, and if we have 15 rides, that's 30-plus people that's going to go to that restaurant, you know, and we're going to buy our meal and stop and get gas and stop and get supplies and then go out and ride out in the county somewhere because we have county permits. So just think of the benefits, you know, that's going to give, you know, your sales tax, your servers are going to benefit from it and everything else. I put on poker runs for the Elks and the Shriners. I get permission from the city so we could drive through town and waive permits and be allowed to be on the streets. Butler County actually waves of people coming in from throughout the state when we do these events. The permit, it brings revenue to hotels because I have friends in my Facebook group that are, live all over, like out in Winstonville and Old Fallon. We have documentation from people that register that come in from all over the state to these poker runs. So, and they spend the night or spend the weekend. I'd be happy to answer any questions or concerns that you might have regarding these. I've been on them for past several years. I've hosted them for the past several years.
So, I have just a quick question. So, if this is passed, I guess on the poker runs, you wouldn't ask for that? Anyone who enters would have to come to City Hall and give this permit, or how would that...
I would ask for it to be waived for the people that are driving, you know, because normally on the poker runs, we kind of just cut through and then head out to the county. But, you know, the people would be staying in hotels and using restaurants and gas stations and stuff like that, and I don't see that that as being a loss in revenue because you're going to have your city residents and your county residents and maybe even some people from Wayne County. I've got a Wayne County sticker. I've got a Ripley County sticker, Butler County, you know. I don't mind buying the stickers for permission to ride.
Sir, did you want to add anything to this?
All I have is...
Just your name and your address, too?
My name is Greg Dodd. I live at 618 Carrollon.
Okay.
I enjoy riding mine. I've got a lot of money in it. Unfortunately, I don't have a way to get it out of town. Just being honest. I need, you know, please...
You don't have a trailer?
Don't have a trailer. I got to get the hucks to get gas and back out to Roxy Road to be able to get out of county. Yeah, I'd like to take my wife, new wife. I put off my honeymoon tonight, by the way. Kind of in trouble there, but hey, you know, I need this. Take her out to dinner. Get with a group of people. Go to town, take a ride, go up to Williamsville, Van Buren, whatever. They're fun. They're safe. I own a four-wheeler, actual ATV. Won't ride it on the streets. It's too dangerous. Tires are too thin. They're not stable. My, my side-by-side be like driving in my truck and having a wreck. I mean, that, that safety conscious is with them, and we got a lot of money in them. I'm not out here to tear mine up. I just want to be able to ride where I want to ride and have a good time. I believe I talked to most of you on the phone this week. Told you I wasn't a good speaker, but I'm here. I'm here.
You're actually bigger than the smart car.
Yes, yeah, I agree with that. There's this, I don't know, I really don't have nothing else to say. I've just got a lot of money in mine. I want to ride it. I'm not out here to act stupid. Ain't going to get in anybody's driveway and tear it up, you know. Just have fun, and I hope you all would consider it. I've got all the stickers for around here. I just don't have this one, so please take it into consideration. I appreciate your time.
Thank you for your time.
Just have one brief thing, Dad.
Okay.
Out of traveling throughout the state, I'd be over in Sykesville or Frederick Town or Piedmont, Donovan. People use them like vehicles. You'll see a little old lady with her grandkids get out and go into Walmart and get their groceries and stuff and come out and leave, you know. It's, they're good on fuel. They're safe, and there's a large community in this town that would like to have the privilege to be able to ride on the city streets, and I want to thank you all very much for your time.
Thank you.
And if you have questions, you know where I work.
I have one concern, noise. There are some a lot louder than others. I've heard some quiet ones and then I've heard some really loud ones. That's one concern of mine. How can we deal with that?
Well, how can you deal with the noise of these hot rod cars and these diesel trucks that have the tune removed or have a tune added that, you know, people drive through town and rattle pipes on? Majority of the people that I ride with, they don't put a lot of aftermarket accessories on, like changing their muffler and stuff out like that. So, I mean, it's like with everything else, the, you may have a couple bad, like you, you drive through town. You hear a lot of trucks go down your street, you know. It'd be similar, but most of these people will want to come into town for the convenience of getting supplies or grocery shopping and stuff and then head back home.
What is the average cost per permit that you pay?
The average cost, around $15. You know, my Wayne County, I think that's 15, maybe 20. I don't remember. Butler County is 15 and it's lifetime, okay. Was it Ripley County? I'm thinking that that was 15 or 20.
I just...
Yeah, and I know the fees that you discussed here at first was very high, and I talked to a lot of people that they, they'd be willing to pay, you know, the 15 processing and up to 35, I mean, the 15 permit because you can't charge over that per state law, you know, up to 35 for a total of $50 for a permit, renew it every year.
I renew mine every year.
Larry, would you renew yours?
He probably don't have his hearing aid.
So, anywhere from 15 to $50, you felt like...
Yeah, I've never been to a town that was 50.
Sure.
You know, most of them are under $20, but I understand if the city's wanting to add a processing fee, you know, for the paperwork, the cost of the stickers and stuff. I think they should, in my opinion.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Anybody else in the audience want to speak on that?
I have a question for the city manager. You had mentioned in your notes possibly a two-year permit instead of a one-year.
Yes, I, or at least give that option, you know, that, so, kind of like when you go get your license plates renewed on your vehicle, you can get a one-year for a little bit additional. You get it, you can get it for two years and not have to worry about it as often.
My concern with that is, do we have a system like the state was to know if they still have insurance, if they still have...
No, but I mean, they could go buy insurance today and cancel it the next day.
The state doesn't give that either.
Yeah.
Just letting you know. The state doesn't follow insurance.
The copy of the ordinance, I'm sorry.
Mr. Vane.
The copy of the ordinance I have has 18, but I saw one earlier tonight that said 21, so it is 21 years of age. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So, 21.
Yes.
And one other, one other thing where it talks about turn signals and headlamps and taillamps and stop lamps, I would add horn in there, and that was suggested tonight. I mean, like you have to have horn.
An audible device.
Do they come with horns on them?
I don't know, but...
Some do, some don't. They're a cheap aftermarket, Adam.
So, there were a few things that have kind of been read. So, I like the 21 versus 18. I personally feel like turn signals should be required. I'm not sure how I feel about hand signals.
Yeah, I'm not either. I kind of agree.
I don't, I don't know. I don't know what. And then the list of authorized users, I guess, would that be as long as they were listed on their insurance policy or could show proof of insurance? You know, we could list them on that, that authorized list, but it's not...
You know, kind of what, from talking to some other places that do it, is that they, on the application, there would be a, a space for a list where you could put who would, who is authorized to drive it, yeah.
On insurance, it's, your policy is who is in your household and whoever you give permission to. So, it wouldn't be if I owned one, it would be me on my policy.
Right.
If I was at your house and said you could drive it, you're covered to drive it. You don't have to list my policy. So, that would be a moot point.
So, kind of, we don't even need it?
I mean, the proof of insurance, yes, but, but there wouldn't be a way to...
All right, users aren't necessary, as long as that permit's on that vehicle.
As long as they're over 21 years old, yeah. I mean, as per what we would say.
Going back to turn signals, if the vehicle was not manufactured with turn signals, I don't see how we could require them to have turn signals.
Is that typically an aftermarket?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, but I find a lot of areas...
Come up to the mic one more time, please.
Mine didn't have turn signals on. Mine does not.
Does not? So, it's typically, they typically do not. Is that correct?
I've added turn signals to mine. He's added turn signals to his.
No, not yet.
Oh, not yet. He was going to. But for the safety of driving through town and a lot of people with inattention, they're always looking at their phones and cars and stuff. Half the people in town don't use their turn signals anyways, is it, we all know, but I still think, in my personal opinion, that it'd be good to have that part in the ordinance for the safety of these machines and the people in the community.
I'm not sure that people nowadays know what a hand signal is.
You just tell me. I said, what do you do if you need to turn right? And he was like, I'm like...
Yeah, that's...
See, side of body, right?
Yeah, right, left, reverse.
Yeah, but if they're looking at their phone and coming up to a stoplight and they see your arm out, they're going to think, has he got a question?
No, I would have thought...
He's saying hi.
Our younger generation probably doesn't even know about...
I don't, I agree.
Hey, but you can't be holding your phone.
You'll take the younger generation category. I just, so Dan, just to clarify what you're saying, you say you are in support of leaving that turn signals required in there?
I am in support of leaving that in there, and so is everyone else that we have talked to on our group and business owners throughout the community that live in the city, they have businesses, you know, they're all fine with the way that the ordinance is wrote. As you could see, we're an older bunch who's in here in support of it, you know. And I'm sure with every new ordinance, you'll have your hiccup phase, but once it gets settled in, I know Chief McLean will highly enforce the parts of the ordinance and the revocation of their permit along with criminal or traffic infractions, you know, for the city. It's like, hey, you know, I'm going to lose my permit. I get a ticket for this, this, and this because I signed this paper stating that I have all this stuff and I don't, and I was speeding through town and, you know, so get them off the street and maybe let them reapply after the one year for a new permit.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
The reflectors that y'all in your ordinance...
Can you get in front of the mic just a little bit more?
Sure, I'm sorry.
No, no problem.
I didn't want to knock the big guy out of the way. The reflectors, of course, I have a triangle on the back of mine, safety triangle. Can we reconsider maybe if the other reflectors that's going to be stuck on the backsides? I think it's in the ordinance that y'all are looking at. Is that going to still be, or are you still going to want the stickers, the reflectors to on, one on each side of the rear, one on each side of the front?
So, it says, one red on each side as far as to the rear is correct, and then one red on the rear.
Okay, so with the safety, I'm sorry, go ahead. Safety triangle on the back, would that be sufficient?
I might have an answer to that. All these rides coming out now have taillights with reflectors built into them, so that should suffice that portion of it, you know. Just like cars, they have built-in reflectors in the taillights, so when you're approaching from the side, plus the taillight at evening or low visibility and stuff like that, you know, the lights come on the, on mine in the rear and stay on the whole time I'm driving. So, it's constantly emitting, you know, that red reflection.
Kind of where I was going with this.
So, you're saying just the, one triangle on the back?
Well, as Mr. St. Lawrence was saying, all of them anymore have blink, have taillights, brake lights, and you're required in the county to have a slow-moving triangle. Would that be sufficient with them, with the brake lights and the taillights? Will that be sufficient for the other reflectors in there?
So, maybe we edit that, but we leave it how it is, and then, I guess, maybe add, you know, if, if the UTV is manufactured with taillights, the triangle is sufficient?
Yeah, that needs to be revised, the wording of that, because I should have drove mine in here.
Y'all want to see a picture of mine? I'm a showboater when it comes to my ride.
I ride around a lot for riding on trails in the woods and stuff like that for safety.
Headlights, of course, they all got headlights.
Do you know, Daniel, I, I think I have one for Carter County, and I think it just calls for a triangle. Is that...
Well, the county requires that you have a slow-moving triangle.
Okay.
And Wayne County used to be, you had to have an orange safety flag, minimum height six foot, but they kind of done away with that. A lot of people are putting these whip lights on, which are highly visible, you know. They're just two poles with LED lights on them. They're very visible. They're expensive. I don't have a set.
Can I show you a set? I, I just...
But, I mean, we don't want to get hit while we're out there.
I'm just trying to show you how safety conscious we are. Hit come forward.
Yeah, come on up.
I've got the Polaris Ranger. I mean, it's not, I think 7,000 brand new, not 50, so...
But, how many, owning a UTV, how do you feel about the triangle or the reflectors?
What is it called?
Do you have taillights?
Yes, I do.
And on the, your taillights come around the side, and it has the reflector built into the taillights.
I mean, I have the triangle on there for Carter County or Van Buren, Missouri, too, but I don't know that it, I don't have a problem with having both. I mean, or like you said, if they don't have the reflectors built in and...
Then have them do that, but if they do, then it's the triangle.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, one reason, I mean, I asked to put this on the agenda and, you know, I had some phone calls, but I live on Baron Road and 15 or 20 of these go by my house on the weekends.
I live on Sylvan.
I mean, it's, they're all over the place, but I think part of the problem is I also have the old-style three-wheeler that goes by every day. In fact, I've seen him downtown. Kids are driving four-wheelers. Now, whether they're going to stop or not, you know, I know the police department will enforce it once, if this gets passed, but they may see those other vehicles out there thinking they can ride just like everybody else, but the people on the four-wheelers, the old four-wheelers and the, these are kids. They're not, they're not 21-year-old adults. They're 14, 15-year-old kids, and it actually goes the same with the scooters. I left a council meeting one night. One of those scooters was flying down the center turn lane on 67, and...
I think with passing this, you can gain control over the side-by-sides.
I agree.
And enforce...
I think you'd lose more control.
Do you really? See, I don't.
And enforce not having the four-wheelers and the three-wheelers and stuff out there.
Billy, what'd you say?
And making the parents responsible.
I said, I think you'd lose more control instead of gaining control.
Well, it gives us some meat that we can, I think, to the producers.
But to me, I mean, a motorcycle is more dangerous than side-by-sides, so, or skater.
You have the little debit scooters to go around town. Yeah, them ain't real safe.
Well, I appreciate you all coming forward and gathering all this information, so...
We want to thank you very much for your time.
You're welcome.
And consideration.
Yeah.
It's really not like groups that are worried about like you all, but, you know, what everybody else does, you know, y'all are more law-abiding, purpose-driven, you know, instead of trying to use it every day for anything and, you know, because of the traffic and stuff like that, you know, like on Fridays, it's real bad. Saturdays, it's real bad. You know, that's the only thing I think of, you know.
Yeah.
Respect that.
Yep, I do. I respect it. I just...
With the 21 minimum age, I think that's a big step in the right...
Right. Catch, get on a four-wheeler. If you hit his mom and dad back in the back pocket hard enough, they'll take care of the situation. Just like us, if we do something, you hit us in the back pocket hard enough, the rest of them's going to pay attention. That's how I feel about it, but thank you all.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
With the amendments that we've mentioned tonight, I'd like to move this to voting session, number six.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item C, the City Council will consider bids received for a self-contained skid unit for fire suppression for the Papa Bluff Fire Department. Chief Mike Moffett.
Good evening. This was a budgeted item. We put it out for sealed bids, and we received four bids, and Sentinel Emergency Solutions had the best bid. That's who I would like to go... That's who I would like to go with. Does anyone have any questions on what this unit is?
Tell us a little bit about it.
Okay, this is like a self-contained fire suppression unit. It will go in on the back of a flatbed, one-ton, four-wheel drive pickup. So it has off-road capabilities, um, it's gonna have its own motor, its own pump, it has 250 gallons of water on it. It can pump up to 300 gallons per minute if it has a water supply to it. It will have two, two attack lines coming off of it, so it'd be mainly used for wildland fires, fires that are not accessible from a fire truck.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask.
Right.
And it's replacing a unit that is...
We bought it in 2001.
2001?
Yeah, it's 22 years old, and it worked up until recently, the pump went out, it just cost too much to replace, so... And like I said, we did have this money budgeted for, for this, so...
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item D, the city council will consider bids received for washer extractors for fire gear for the Popper Bluff Fire Department. Chief Moffett.
All right, this was the AFG grant we received to purchase this, these three units. Uh, again, Sentinel Emergency Solutions out of St. Louis had the best bid. Um, these are like heavy-duty washing machines for washing our fire gear. This will allow us to have one at each station. Uh, we have one right now at Station One that we all have to share, and it's 12 years old, so... But so we do have a 5% match on this, so...
I'll make a motion to move to the voting session to be held November 6. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item E, the city council will consider bids received for a combination leaf and debris vacuum catch, basin cleaner, and street sweeper. Street Superintendent Jerry Lawson.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, we've got this, uh, as you all know, we got a $5 million DNR grant for stormwater improvements, and, uh, this happened to be, uh, one of the items that could be covered under this bid, which is a rare exception. Usually, equipment is not considered, but, uh, we were able to get this in, and our street sweeper is about 10 years old, and the truck and chassis parts are all right, but the sweeper component has been, well, just one side works. We've had to rob parts off the other side to keep the other side going, so on and so forth. So, uh, having the opportunity to get this with, uh, grant money, we opted to go with a Elgin Mega Wind Sweeper. It has a remote articulating boom arm on the back that holds a 12-inch diameter hose, and this will be extremely handy and helpful in the collection of leaves and ditches. Uh, the operator can stand on the street surface, control the boom with a remote pad here, whereas in the past, we've had one or two guys in the ditch wrestling the tube and, and basically have to wear shin guards to keep it from beating their shins up and knees, and, uh, it's always been a issue I've worried about, a workman's comp claim on in the past, and, uh, so hopefully that'll avoid any kind of physical injury or anything, and, and make the ability to pick up leaves quicker and safer for everybody. We are, uh, going to keep, uh, our machine we're currently using now, just so we can speed the process up, so we're not stuck in one part of town for an extended period. We'll be able to run two crews and two options to, uh, possibly be able to go out and, and, you know, if someone calls in and says, "Hey, I've got a boxcar full of leaves out here and my front yard raked up, is there any way you guys could come get them?", we maybe will take the other machine and get them before they blow all over the neighborhood and the neighbors' yards. I said, "Possibly," Erica, I said, "Possibly." We'll see, we'll see what we can work in, I, I'm limited on staff, but we'll...
The street sweeper you have now, it's not an Elgin, is it?
No, no, it's, it's not.
Because I know we had trouble with that the first year we bought it, so...
Yeah, and it's, it's about 10 years old, and the thing typically runs about every day. There's some days in the summer, some weeks, we may say, "Hey, there's not really any leaves, maybe some grass clippings", and especially if we're doing asphalt, we'll pull the operator off of it and put him in a dump truck to haul asphalt for us or something, but, uh, like I said, the truck itself is, is, uh, engine sound, it's just the components of the sweeper that have seen their, but actually, a chain broke holding one side of it this afternoon, so we bungee-coarded it up and got it back to the shop, so... And it, it will still be a year before we even get this truck, because large trucks with large chassis are on a wait list.
It's a strike.
Oh, yeah.
But you are gonna repurpose the truck and the frame and all that?
Right now, we have got it in as a trade-in value. That's a great question. We had some ARCA money, we tried to get some dump trucks, we had to go find one to get a bid on. And I spoke to Matt about this, we actually have two 1995s that are sitting still right now, one is just unreparable. And, uh, it, what a small dump truck would run, new, somewhere around $100,000. We could take the sweeping component off of this, uh, take a bed and what they call the wet kit that raises it off of one of the old dump trucks that isn't operable any longer, put it on this. Uh, I think our trade-in value was 25,000 on this, but basically, it would give us another dump truck for 25,000 minus the trade-in, so kind of things I guess we'll look at as we go through the budget here in a few more weeks, and see which is the best practical purpose to...
That is what I had mentioned, that they, that we were not gonna use the trade-in a lot, we weren't, we weren't gonna trade it in, we were gonna keep the, what we had.
Yeah, like I said, because, yeah, it's, it's just so hard to find a, it's hard to find a, a new one, and it's hard to find a used one that you know what you're getting.
That's right.
And at least with this, like I said, truck and everything, engine sound in it, it's just the schwartz part of it, the street sweeper part that's got issues. And Elgin is one of the top-end sweeper manufacturers, so... Any other questions?
No, I think it's great that we're able to use the grant money for this.
Yeah.
And now, this, we demoed this over a year ago, and, uh, that's how long, of course, with grant money and everything, it takes to make things work, and we went down above the parking garage before it was tore down on a part of downtown that hadn't been swept a whole lot, and this was literally sucking the sand out of the bricks down there because it was built up so bad.
Yeah.
So, uh, you know, I think it'll be a good investment for us, and we should get several years out of it.
I'll make a motion to move this to the voting session to be held November 6.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item F, the city council will consider a proposed ordinance authorizing the Missouri Department of Transportation to install a traffic sign on Pine Street. Manager Winters?
Thank you, Mayor. So we've been working with MODOT, uh, looking for a variety of ways to try to prevent another truck from striking the marquee at the Rogers Theater. Um, one of the things that MODOT has agreed to is placing a "No Right Turn For Truck" sign on Pine Street. Um, before they will place that sign, they want the city council to pass an ordinance, um, so that we have some enforcement that we can take that, uh, it'll, you declaring that to be an illegal act. Um, so what I have presented to you tonight is the sample that they had provided that they would like you to pass. You know, this has been going on back and forth with them for a while, so I, I, I am asking that you workshop and vote this tonight. Um, I think there are some Rogers Theater board members here tonight that, um, would like, maybe want an opportunity to speak, um... I think so.
Yeah, come on up. Just give your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'm Wally Duncan, I have an office at 1900 Northwood here in Popper Bluff. Good to see you, everyone, and, um, we, we thank you for, uh, for considering this and giving us the opportunity. If you haven't done so already, when you're finished with the meeting, drive by the Rogers and, and see what it looks like.
We couldn't miss it tonight.
Yeah, I, I think...
You really were showing out.
I, I think you'll be impressed, um, and, uh, we, we, we have it fixed again, and obviously, we would like to, uh, to, to preserve that and try to do everything we can to keep it from getting hit. Um, I haven't put pencil or paper, but I'm guessing that we're probably, uh, somewhere in the $100,000 range as to what we have spent, uh, in order to repair the marquee, and, uh, we think it's an asset to Popper Bluff, and the downtown Popper Bluff, and we, we want to do everything we can to preserve that. And, uh, I've, I've got to compliment, uh, City Manager Winters, he's, he's been very helpful, uh, working with us to try to come up with solutions. Um, this is, I think, one step in the right direction. Hopefully, we can, we can do some other things that will also, uh, help, uh, help preserve the, the, the marquee and the, and the Rogers Theater, it's, uh, it's just a, it's a bad situation the way it is now, so we're hoping it'll, it'll do that. And I think this will help, uh, quite a bit. Um, and, and along with that, I would, would say to you that Thursday night, we are having a banquet. It's our annual Restore the Rogers Theater banquet, and, uh, I just happen to have some tickets that I'm going to give to, to the city clerk, and, and for any one of you who want to come, uh, compliments of the Rogers Theater Board. So I'm gonna give that to Lord.
Well, Wally, I drove by before the council meeting, and I don't get out much at night anymore, but, uh, it looks great.
Yeah, it does, and, uh, we got some other board members here that may want to say something.
I'm Larry Kimbrough, 3600 Marble Hill Drive, or Marble Hill Road in Popper Bluff, and I've been on the board longer than I care to talk about. We saw incredible progress, we work very, very hard for the money we make to repair that. We have spent lots of money on the roof, on the air conditioning, on the utilities, everything, including inside the, the drugstore, now, of course, the tower and the marquee, let me keep going, and the portico underneath now. And we have other projects like the ticket booth and the frames for the showing upcoming attractions. Having said that, everything we have takes one step backwards every time we have somebody keep damaging that marquee. And that, just getting people in here to work on that is no small feat, and the next speaker you'll see is like a junkyard dog after that guy to get that marquee and that portico, and to the point that he's out there even today with a high-pressure washer, working on that, and, uh, with no pay, I might add, and so he's working on that. But we do appreciate the efforts and the time and the research Matt Winters has done on us, helping us with MODOT. We believe this is a great first step, and that's what we want right now, to see how that works on that no-right turn. So I appreciate your consideration on that, it's gonna be a big, big help for us.
Tom Rankin, 7507 Woodland Metal Drive, I'm a country boy. Thank you all for your time. Uh, I just asked for us to get it expedited as fast as we can. It, as said earlier, it's just amazing how good it looks, and I do appreciate the city working with us and helping us. Thank you.
Guys, we appreciate it, as a city, the work that you all have put into that. It is incredible, drove by there tonight, I was, uh, you can't help but not catch your eye, so great work, guys, appreciate it.
So just so you know, and, uh, update them, too, I, the, one of the other steps is to improve the curb there and push the curb out, um, and it's gonna be a, a tall, flat-fronted, uh, MODOT calls it, non-mountable curb that we will, uh, the, the street department will actually install. Uh, we've been working with MODOT on getting a permit for that, actually had some emails with them today, they're, um, have now asked for a performance bond from the city to, to do that, so I've sent that off to Steve Rhodes to, uh, get that taken care of, so we can get that to him, so hopefully they will move that along.
All those little steps help, that will, however, for those big trucks, that's mere speed bump, is all they're gonna feel before they hear the crunch, but all those added together maybe will help, thanks.
I'll make a motion.
Brent Davis, 103 Rimbrandt, uh, here in Popper Bluff. I know this is a great step forward, just to have a no-right turn for big trucks. Would there be any consideration in the future, I just want you to think about this, making that a one-way street again? That would completely prevent it. I mean, the other guy the other day that did $3,800 worth of damage after we got it all fixed, his GPS, he said, took him to make a right turn to go to the post office. As we all know, the post office is not that way, but there, if that's happened once, then it can happen again and again and again. Just a thought, about a one-way street, just right there in front of the Rogers, where you can't turn any, you know, nobody can turn.
That was Barbara and I's first suggestion, but we were told, well, the fire department...
They can do, they, they use that... Well, they can go, which is like any police officer, they can go irrespective of one-way streets, it, it doesn't matter, they don't have to stop at stop signs, they don't have to go, uh, abide by a one-way street, they're, any, any law enforcement or emergency vehicle. Just, just that one block, I mean, I appreciate it, and I think this will help, and, and I'm just crossing my fingers that no, you know, make us a great big sign. Maybe with flashing lights around it, you know, so everybody sees it.
How many times has that marquee been hit?
There's no telling.
I mean, since the restoration?
Just since the restoration, twice.
Twice already.
This year.
Yeah. It went several years, but, you know, probably, I don't know, 30 or so years before, uh, when it was hit the last time, and, uh, but since we started restoring it, it's like, it's been...
It looks good now. And, uh, and you know, and Walt, go ahead.
Those two hits was a little over $10,000 damage, you know?
Years ago, we had a city council, and I've come to twice and tried to appeal. At one time, they had a, uh, a man from Springfield who had a drawing about how downtown should look met, you might remember that, I think they spent quite a bit just on this, and I wanted five minutes of the time, and I said, "Hey, you've got a, you've got a diamond in the rough right here, if we could have some help in getting this thing really, really done", I'm telling you, you could have a show every week, and as, as he was talking about a while ago, people coming in to see shows. When I have somebody like Gene Watson or Mo Bandi, I've had people from Colorado and Minnesota, I mean, fill this place up. Uh, when somebody is a rabid fan of a country music star, they'll drive a long way just to see him, and, uh...
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I did have a question, what is the current capacity of...
A thousand.
Thousand?
A little over a thousand, but I just call it a thousand, 700 down and 300 upstairs.
Okay.
Yeah. So, thank you.
Appreciate it, guys, thank you for all you do there, Rogers, and I would, uh...
I'll make the motion to move it to the voting session tonight.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item G, the city council will consider a bid received for the sale of a city-owned vacant property located at 310 North C Street. Manager Winters?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, my, I had a technical problem there for a minute. Um, so back a couple of years ago, we bought some properties from the county collector that had at least been through the tax sale four times, that also had city-owned liens on them. Uh, I think we paid a dollar a piece for them. Um, we've sold a few of those, we've put them out to bid a couple of times, and we've had some others that have sold individually. Had a gentleman come in the other day that wants to buy the one that's next to his, where he lives, and he's offered $100, and I would recommend that you accept that bid for $100 for 310 North C Street.
I'll make a motion to move it to the November 6 voting session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item N, action-required items, AA Bill number 8502, the city council will take action on an ordinance annexing 6.64 acres located at 3387 Canal Boulevard into the city of Popper Bluff and designated as zoning classification of C2 general commercial.
First reading of bill number 8502?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor?
An ordinance annexing certain real property into the city of Popper Bluff, Missouri, such property being located at 33... such property being located at 3385 Canal Boulevard, Butler County, Missouri, and owned by George Milner.
Motion for a second reading?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor?
An ordinance annexing a certain real property into the city of Popper Bluff, Missouri, such property being located at 3385 Canal Boulevard in Butler County, Missouri, and owned by George Milner.
Motion for adoption?
Second.
Any questions or comment?
I just have one question. The agenda is 87, the ordinance is 85. I was just clarifying what the others want to say.
Yeah. I think 3387, I think that is a typo.
Yeah, I think.
Madam Councilwoman, I will correct that. The Milner property is 3387 and the Clark property is 3385.
So that's right.
Right. Two separate properties, both of them have come through P and Z separately.
Any other questions or discussion? Roll call, Clerk Phelps.
Councilwoman Parsons? Yes. Councilwoman Horton? Yes. Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Massingham?
Yes.
Councilman DePew?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Fox?
Yes.
Mayor Cornman?
Yes.
Seven yes votes.
Bill number 8502 has been adopted. BB, bill number 8503, the city council will take action on an ordinance rezoning 7.57 acres located at 3385 Canal Boulevard from RS1 rural residential to C2 general commercial.
Motion for first reading of bill number 8503?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor?
Yeah, and let me clarify that once again. 8503, which is the Clark property, that's actually 3387 Canal Boulevard. So when I read this, it's going to deviate from the written document that you have in front of you. An ordinance rezoning property located at 3387 Canal Boulevard in Popper Bluff, Missouri.
Motion for second reading?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor?
An ordinance rezoning property located at 3387 Canal Boulevard in Popper Bluff, Missouri.
Motion for adoption of bill 8503?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Roll call, Clerk Phelps.
Councilwoman Horton? Yes. Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Massingham?
Yes.
Councilman DePew?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parsons? Yes. Mayor Pro Tim Fox?
Yes.
Mayor Cornman?
Yes.
Seven yes votes.
Bill 8503 has been adopted. CC, bill number 8504, the city council will take action on an ordinance accepting a bid for a tow barless tug for the Popper Bluff Regional Business Airport.
Motion for a first reading of bill number 8504?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor?
An ordinance accepting a bid from JBT Letto Incorporated for a tow barless tug with warranties for the Popper Bluff Regional Business Airport.
Motion for second reading of bill number 8504?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor?
An ordinance accepting a bid from JBT Letto Inc. for a tow barless tug with warranties for the Popper Bluff Regional Business Airport.
Make a motion for adoption. Second.
Any questions or discussion? Clerk Phelps, roll call, please.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Massingham?
Yes.
Councilman DePew?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parsons? Yes. Councilwoman Horton? Yes. Mayor Pro Tim Fox?
Yes.
Mayor Cornman?
Yes.
Seven yes votes.
Bill number 8504 has been adopted. DD, bill number 8505, the city council will take action on an ordinance authorizing the Missouri Department of Transportation to install a traffic sign on Pine Street.
Make a motion for first reading of bill number 8505?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor?
An ordinance approving and authorizing the installation of a traffic sign by the Missouri Department of Transportation at the intersection of Pine and Broadway Streets and authorizing the enforcement of said traffic sign in Popper Bluff.
Second reading of bill 8505?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor?
An ordinance approving and authorizing the installation of a traffic sign by the Missouri Department of Transportation at the intersection of Pine and Broadway Streets and authorizing the enforcement of said traffic sign in Popper Bluff.
Make a motion for adoption, bill number 8505? Second.
Any questions or discussion? Roll call, Clerk Phelps.
Councilman Massingham?
Yes.
Councilman DePew?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parsons? Yes. Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Fox?
Yes.
Mayor Cornman?
Yes.
Seven yes votes.
Bill 8505 has been adopted. EE, bill number 8506, the city council will take action on an ordinance approving an amended petition with respect to the Green Forest Community Improvement District and authorizing certain other actions in connection therewith.
Motion for first reading of bill number 8506?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor?
An ordinance of the city of Popper Bluff, Missouri, approving an amended petition with respect to the Green Forest Community Improvement District and authorizing certain other actions in connection therewith.
Motion for second reading of bill 8506?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor?
An ordinance of the city of Popper Bluff, Missouri, approving an amended petition with respect to the Green Forest Community Improvement District and authorizing certain other actions in connection therewith.
Motion for adoption of bill 8506?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Roll call, Clerk Phelps.
Councilman DePew?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parsons? Yes. Councilwoman Horton? Yes. Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Massingham?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Fox?
Yes.
Mayor Cornman?
Yes.
Seven yes votes.
Bill number 8506 has been adopted. We will be having a closed session this evening following our city manager's report. Mr. Winters?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Make a motion to move it to a closed session after the manager's report.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Go ahead a minute.
So.
Okay, roll call, Clerk Phelps.
Councilwoman Parsons? Yes. Councilwoman Horton? Yes. Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Massingham?
Yes.
Councilman DePew?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Fox?
Yes.
Mayor Cornman?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Go ahead, Mr. Winters. Let's try this again.
One more time. So this past Saturday was buff up the bluff. Had a big turnout. Appreciate all the work the street department did. They had a couple crews out picking up elderly call-ins, also had some volunteers. Our regular standbys, Chris Ross and Ashton DeGaris, they were there all day picking up calls, some curbside for senior citizens and they even drug a cousin, Dylan Jones, in on it this year. Jake Butterfield was also a volunteer this Saturday. And Councilman Robert Smith. We will have all the figures from the tonnage collected from Hinson's here in the next few days and I'll share that all with you when we get it. Bids went out, our bids are being accepted right now for the demolition of our old city hall building. They're due November 2nd. Actually met with a couple of different demo contractors and an asbestos abatement contractor this morning. I let them in, I stayed outside, I let them in to go walk through the building to start working on their bids. The Coliseum Pool is back open regular hours. I'm not sure if I told you all that yet or not, but it is back open regular hours. The roof over the pool is completed with just a few minor touch-ups that are going to be done. We have our last follow-up meeting with the contractor first of next week to wrap that up and close it out completely, so. That's all I have this evening.
I just want to thank the group from the Rogers Theater. Thank you for what you do. The place looks wonderful, looks great. Thanks again.
And we'll plug the 7th Annual Restore the Rogers Banquet.